Stand by TJ. At seven o'clock, the Wahihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board number 26 is called to order. At this time, we'd like to call first up is our first responders. Can we have HPD?
Good evening Lieutenant Baisa from the Honolulu Police Department, Waahua Police Station. Reporting for the statistics for April 15th to May 14th. We've had in the Wahihua area, seven assault cases, five burglary cases into homes and businesses, forty-three motor vehicle collisions. We've had zero robberies, which is good, two car break-ins, and about 1,098 calls for service. For our safety tips for the month, being that it's graduation season, whether you're graduating, attending the graduation, or working it, stay alert, be aware of your surroundings. Leave any venues with friends or loved ones, or people that you know. Try to stay or park in well-lit areas. Don't drink and drive, of course, and if you are gonna drink and drive, get a designated driver, or catch a cab, or a ride-sharing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you guys are so, they're so good. Any questions from our board for HPD? Questions from the community for HPD? And questions, any questions virtually for HPD? Okay, hearing that, I do have some follow-up questions, Lieutenant, if you don't mind. And this is from last month. The people who were concerned about the illegal dumping that was taking place on Koa Street. If any advance notice has been given to them. The section between Ipuhau Street and Kilani, there are mattresses and, you know...
I don't know what, I don't have any numbers to give you. I know that our community policing team was working on that.
Okay.
So yeah, that's something that they continuously work on.
Okay, and the other one is when will, again, on Koa Street, when will the grass be cut on the backside of the police station?
We would have, we have to go through some contracts and stuff. I know that we have a maintenance person, he's by himself, and can't always rely on him to do the thing timely, because it's kind of a big area for him to take care of. So we'll try to get that taken care of right away.
Okay, that'd be great if you could follow up. And the last question that, and this one is from me, actually, I have to say, is the most recent drive-by that I went by Avocado Street. There now is, we were under the impression that there was gonna be, you know, a clean-out area, but now there is a, on the concrete building on the backside, somebody attached like a tarp, and there's a vehicle underneath there that they're working on. There's also that back corner of the, if you're facing that unit on the right-hand side in the corner, you can see people walking in and out of that door. And then other times, you can see a lock on the door, but other times, you see people going in and out with their bicycles or coming in, you know. So again, if we could get some patrol to check or see what the situation is, and if you have any update on what the situation is far as that property being sold.
This is a private property, correct?
Right, well, it's a mix. That stretch is owned by city, state, military, and private. So that one little stretch of property.
On avocado.
On avocado, has four owners. So it's city, state, what did I say, city, state, and military, yeah, and then private.
Okay, I'll email you the response.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you. Okay, any other questions for HPD at this time?
Chair Ishikawa, it's TJ.
Hi TJ.
And I'm sorry. Hi, aloha, aloha kakou, aloha kakou. I just wanted to know, Officer Baisa, have anyone, has any, has anybody reached out to the Wahihua Police Station regarding conversations about the services that HPD will be providing for the pedestrian bridge? I know it's a little early, but I just wanted to know if that is something that has, a conversation that has already started.
Not that I know of. Yeah, again, that's a question probably for my, for the community policing team. They're the ones that normally go to those meetings. They're the ones that coordinate those. So I'll try to ask them, and then see if we can get an answer for you by next meeting. But as far as I know, we haven't had any started.
Okay, thank you so much, and I'm sorry, one more. Any new information to share about the building situated at 123 Mango Street, which is just across the street from the Dots and Marion's Catering property?
No, I have nothing, sorry, nothing for you on that property.
Okay, thank you so much for your time, and we appreciate all of your work that you folks do out in our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you TJ. Any other questions for HPD? And if not, I apologize, I just wanted to let you know, because you may be seeing some of these students. These are our valedictorians, Lelou High School, yeah, you come to our meetings, but...
I hopefully, I hopefully don't see you guys in the station. Hopefully outside, and we talk stories, but yeah, very good. Congratulations on you guys, all that you guys did, accolades.
Thank you lieutenant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on, Fire Department. I don't think I see them. None, okay, thank you. Okay, so wow, so we are now up to the main agenda, if I will. So we are now on Agenda Item Number Three, which is our Lelou High School Valedictorians and Mighty Meal Awards. At this time, if anyone wants to notify your family, or anybody that wants to watch this, because it is being broadcast live on Olelo, you can basically go on to the Neighborhood Commission Office website, and from that website, there'll be a connect information.
So it's actually not gonna be on Olelo, but they can join on the WebEx meeting, so they can watch online. So I'll provide the steps, how to get there. You can send them to go to www.honolulu.gov/ncl for Neighborhood Commission Office. And then they can go down to Boards, select the Board Number 26, 2025 Agendas, and then have the list of the agendas, and you will pick the May 2025 Wahihua Whitmore Neighborhood Board Agenda. And then it will have the link that they can join through WebEx, and then they can watch from there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And also, it will be rebroadcast later next, so you can always catch it on that way. Okay, so right now, we're gonna be calling up. To help us do the presentation is our Vice Chair. So Sylvia is gonna go up, and we also welcome your Vice Principal, Akinesi Antonio. So please come up, and if you can welcome them, everyone.
Greetings and aloha, Chair Ishikawa, Board Members and people of our community. What an exciting opportunity for our students to bear witness of the process that it takes to keep their communities safe. So thank you again for inviting us. My name is Akinesi Antonio. I am the proud Vice Principal of the Class of 2025 at Lelou High School. And on behalf of Principal Nakamoto and our Lelou staff, I proudly present to you our thirty-seven valedictorians. And shortly, we will name our Meal of the Year. So I would like to ask all of our valedictorians, if you could line up here, and we will be calling your names. As we call your names, please come forward and share with the community your post-high school plans, whether that is a college or an internship, so that the community is aware of your plans. And then we will conclude with our Meal of the Year, as well as our Alma Mater, okay? And parents, if you wanna go up closer to take a photo, you're welcome to do that as well. Okay, I present to you first Isabella Agarone.
Hello, I'm Isabella Agarone, and I plan to go to University of Hawaii at Manoa, majoring in pre-nursing.
I have Jayden Bartelami.
Hello, I'm Jayden, and I'm going to be attending the Massachusetts College of Art and Design, and currently I am undecided.
Next, we have Lea Bautista.
Hello, everyone, my name is Lea Bautista. I will be attending Washington State University and majoring in Animal Science Pre-Vet.
Okay, I have Charmaine Bondock.
Hi, I'm Charmaine. I will be attending Washington State University and majoring in Genetics and Cell Biology.
I have Kira Brown.
Hi, my name is Kira Brown. I'll be attending UH Manoa, and I plan on majoring in Animal Science.
Next, I have Shella Bumangla. I have Emma Kabinean.
Hi, everyone, I'm Emma. I plan to go to McKendrick University in Illinois, and I will be majoring in Sports Management.
Next up, I have Femi Cabrera. Rohana May DeFiesta.
Aloha, everybody, my name is Rohana May DeFiesta, and I plan to attend Berklee College of Music in Boston, and my major is undecided.
Rianne Ermetanyo. Chloe Ferrera.
Hello, hello, I'm Chloe Ferrera, and I'm going to UH West Oahu and to major in Creative Media.
Stacy Figuration. Sierra Fortuno.
Hi, everybody, my name is Sierra Fortuno, and I will be attending Lewis and Clark College in Portland, Oregon, and I will be majoring in Biomedical Sciences. Thank you.
Kyla Guzier.
My name is Kyla Guzier, and I'll be attending Kapulani Community College and going to major in Radiology Technology.
Tia Igarta. Erica Islaou.
My name is Erica, and I'll be going to the College of St. Benedict, majoring in Accounting.
Casey Johansson.
I'm Casey Johansson, and I'm going to Lewis and Clark State College in Lewiston, Idaho, and majoring in Sports Management.
I have Saritha Jones.
My name is Saritha Jones, I'm going to UH Manoa, and I'm going into pre-medicine.
Ashley Laguiton.
Good evening, my name is Ashley Claire Laguiton, and I will be attending Leeward Community College, and I'll be majoring in Liberal Arts to Nursing.
Jose Laugan.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jose Laugan. I'll be attending UH Manoa, and I'll be majoring in Mechanical Engineering.
Ailani Leano.
Hi, my name is Ailani Leano, and I'll be attending the University of Hawaii at Manoa, majoring in Civil Engineering.
Brienne Leong. Jada Loder. Lucia Loera. I'm sorry, it's Lucia.
Hi, I'm Lucia, and I'll be attending UH Manoa and majoring in Biology.
Kira Lopez. Kyra Magana.
Hello, my name is Kyra Mary Lee Magana. I will be attending UH Manoa, and I will be majoring in Art Studio.
Beverly Rose Mondock.
Hello, my name is Beverly Rose Mondock. I'll be attending Washington State University and be majoring in Animal Science Pre-Vet. Thank you.
Lorelei McDaniel.
Hello, my name is Lorelei McDaniel, and I'm going to Texas A&amp;M Galveston, majoring in Marine Biology.
Calico Pilaris.
Hello, everyone, my name is Calico Pilaris, and I'll be going to UH Manoa, and I'm gonna be majoring in Chemistry.
Jordan Santos.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jordan Santos, and I'm majoring in Civil Engineering at Washington State University.
Raiden Sasaki. Ezekiel Sugui.
Hello, I'm Ezekiel. I'll be going to Washington State University, and I'll be majoring in Electrical Engineering.
Kenley Valdez.
Good evening, my name is Kenley Valdez. I'm attending, going to be attending the University of Arizona and majoring in Biology.
Naya Valdez.
Good evening, my name is Naya Valdez, and I will be attending Hawaii Pacific University, majoring in Nursing.
Rain Yamagata.
My name is Rain Yamagata, and I'll be attending Augusta Escafia School of Culinary Arts, and I'll be majoring in Culinary.
Maita Zin.
Hello, everyone. I am going to Texas A&amp;M University at College Station, and I will be majoring in Economics.
And our Class of 2025 Meal of the Year, Esther Lim.
I'm a valedictorian too, by the way, anyway. Aloha, thank you for having me, my name is Esther Lim, and I will be attending Brown University in Providence, Rhode Island. And I will be, I haven't decided on a major yet, but I will be studying with a concentration in Philosophy, Ethics, and Law. Thank you.
Wow, that is a fantastic group. Can we have another round of applause for our outstanding, oh my God. And if I can, all the students, if you guys can get ready to sing our Alma Mater, we're gonna ask you guys, yep, move on down. I can't, I can't.
Be brave, just come forward.
Okay, and parents, if you guys wanna join in, you're welcome to go up there, but if not, again, we just wanna say we're so proud of you guys. Everybody good? Are you blocking anyone, so your parents can get a photo? Can you see everybody's faces? Okay, wait, before you start, wait, I just wanna say, because I know you guys are gonna dash out, but we really are, we really are very, very proud of our Lelou students. We are from Lelou, graduates of Lelou. And I think there are two of you that are going to the East Coast to Boston. You and me, that's where I went, I went to Boston University. Cheer the terriers, here we go. But anyway, here we go, so see you two can be here, sitting in this seat. Just kidding, all right, ready, everybody? Big smiles and hearty, hearty congratulations to all of you. Here we go. Congratulations to our students, congratulations to our families and parents, and thank you mahalo for being here, for celebrating our outstanding students. But you know, all of our kids at Lelou are great, but outstanding students, mahalo for doing what you do. Another round of applause. And I think you're gonna, you guys are exiting right now. Okay, I wasn't sure. Thank you, everyone, good luck, take care.
Something really quick, hello, everybody, you know, many of us are Lelou mules. We graduated a long time ago, I won't tell you. I'm not as old as Jeannie, though, but, so we come from a whole family of mules. We love you, mules.
Now there's nobody here. Yeah, it is. Thank you, everyone, for celebrating our outstanding students and all of our students at Lelou High School. So we congratulate them and we wish them well. So we, right now, we're moving on to Item Four on our agenda, our monthly report. Is Nicole on for Congresswoman's office? No? Okay. Nicole, if you come on later, let us know. And moving on to our Army Representative, Lieutenant Cox.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Okay, so just a few notes for this month. We have an upcoming job fair on June 24th at Capella High School. It's gonna take place from 8:30 in the morning to 2:00 PM, and it is open to the public, as always. There's gonna be job opportunities and provisional hiring the same day of the job fair, so just come out and see what job opportunities are available to you. For the May Training Advisory, there's gonna be small arms blankfire on East Range with Ranger and Jungle Tactics from the 21st to the 26th, and 28th to the 30th of May, as well as aviation training from the day only, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, from the 17th to the 22nd of May. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there is gonna be artillery and mortar training on the 30th and 31st of May, both day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. Celebrating the Army's 250th Birthday, the community is invited to join the US Army Pacific to celebrate the Army Heritage Week at Fort Durese on Monday, June 12th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There's gonna be static displays of military vehicles, equipment, and emerging technologies that we have in the military, and you can also speak with soldiers about their experiences and different career paths, if you would like to do that. Lastly, Oahu's final EIS. So in accordance with the National Environment Policy Act and the Hawaii Environmental Policy Act, the Army is going to publish a final environmental impact statement, which is the FEIS, in May, for Army Training Land Retention of State Lands at Kahuku Training Area, or KTA, Poa Maho Training Area, and Makua Military Reservation, or MRR. The proposed action is an administrative action that does not include construction, modernization, or changes into ongoing training. The final EIS assesses the environmental impacts of the proposed action alternatives and no-action alternative. Once the final EIS is published, there's gonna be a 30-day waiting period, followed by the record decision later this summer. And any community concerns, there's a line that we have, it's at 808-787-1528.
Sorry, I was writing the phone number down. I'm sorry, was it 787-1528? Eight, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, June.
This evening, it was announced that the Army decided not to renew the leases at Makua Valley and Umahoe Training Area, which is, that's the one right above Helamano Plantation, right? And so no further update on that. They didn't give you anything.
No, that, all they said was they were putting in that last act, and that there was gonna be a decision later on this summer.
Well, I guess somebody made the decision already. Okay, thank you.
I think TJ was on the line, go ahead TJ.
Hi, aloha, I just, I had a couple of questions, but I just wanted to know, where did you say the job fair is gonna be at?
It's gonna be at Capella High School.
At Capella High School, and when is it again?
It's gonna be on June 24th.
Oh, okay, and I'm sorry, only because I'm having issue, audio issues. At Capella High School, on June 24th, at what time?
It's gonna be from 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay, and is there a phone number that interested persons might be able to call to get more information?
There wasn't a phone number that I had, but it's open to the public, so they can go anytime during that. And I can also reach out to see if they have one and get it to you.
Okay, that would be good, yeah, you know, it's like they should come prepared with a resume, or references, or are we looking for them to, of course, dress to impress, to be ready for, you know, pre-interview thingy? But thank you, though. My son is a Capella alumni, and I am a Wahihua... and I am a Wailua Bulldog alumni. So, go Bulldogs. I heard the news over there. But I did have, um, I just wanted to share that it was announced, and I saw it earlier on the news, June. So, thank you for sharing that the Army will not be, they will be letting their leases sunset at Makua on the front side and not on the backside, because if I'm not mistaken, the backside is actually the space that is nearest to Mount Koala. And Schofield is on the other side. And that the EIS, the FEI... Yeah, the final EIS has already been released. It's already been published, I think, two days ago. And you did say that the phone number for any questions was 788-1528?
787-1528.
Okay, okay, thank you. So, if you could, now, my question is, now that the Army has said that they will not be renewing their leases for both Makua and Poma Ho, and I didn't hear anything about the Kahuku area, but can you come back in the next couple of months, or, you know, as soon as you're able to, to let us know what is the Army's plan as far as remediating the land, clearing, you know, whatever has been, whatever is there? Because we certainly do not want... I cannot speak for the area around Makua, but I can say that, as a resident of this community, I would like to think that we don't have another Kahua Olave on our hands where money was allocated or appropriated. And then, till today, we are still cleaning up that area that has been so devastated by the practice of the military. So, again, if you could come back to let us know what the Army's plan is as far as cleaning up and turning back the land, because if I'm not mistaken, there is a provision that says they need to be good stewards of the land and that they should also be good stewards in our communities in which they are in. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, of course.
Appreciate it. And also, you know, we have some community activities going on starting in the summer with Kaukau for Kiki in particular. Would there be a number or someone that we can contact for? Because Kaukau for Kiki will be needing volunteers. Is there a number that I can call that we can get volunteers from the Army to come out in Kaukua to help us?
Um, I can give you my number, my phone number offline, or my email, both.
Okay, could you put it in the chat, baby? Or I tell you what, you can take my number, 808... 238... Okay. 9427. Again, 808-238-9427. And then, if you could get in touch with me in the next couple of days, that would be great. We do have our first distribution for Kaukau for Kiki coming up in the first Tuesday of June.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. And go ahead, you had a question here.
Hi. Hi. Are you folks gonna have something for July 4th this year for the public?
I'm sure we will, ma'am, yes.
But you don't know what...
I, I'm not sure of the plans yet, but I definitely believe we will. Thank you.
Any other questions for the Army from the board? From the community? Or virtually? Okay, all right. Thank you, Lieutenant. And actually, I'll give you a call later on, too, because I have a follow-up question offline, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to our Navy representative.
Evening, everybody. And let me just get this straight. There we go. All right. Good evening, Council and members in the House today. A couple of things for the United States Navy. We brought our weekly Mo'olelo newsletter here, which outlines some of the good stuff that the United States Navy has been participating in the last week. We are just finishing up a port visit from a Chilean ship that has been in Pearl Harbor. Their last day is tomorrow before they depart on their ongoing goodwill tour. I would like to recommend to the community group here, though, that we have the shipboard tours every Saturday. And I would like to set up a special one for the Council here. Hopefully, that you can, you and your family members can attend. It's a good opportunity to see what the United States Navy is doing at Pearl Harbor and also as taxpayers, where the money is going to. And, yeah, I think it's a lot of good that comes from it. This is, you're not obligated to do this, but I certainly would love to set up one of these Saturday mornings where we could have you come aboard. Tour takes about 90 minutes, but we can, we can work around whatever schedule works best for you. All right, and continue with this. We have our ongoing community white boat tours to the USS Arizona. That's another tour that we are putting together for anybody in the community here, too, as well. What we have done is, for a lot of civic and school organizations that put on these tours to get a better idea of what the United States Navy is doing as your neighbor, so we can be as transparent as possible on what it is we do, day in, day out, and see the people. The sailors are people, and they all live here in our community. We'd like to open that opportunity up to get to meet them and see what we do. Ongoing, we have a lot of volunteer efforts completed since we started our La Lima Navy program. And in honor for the United States Navy's 250th birthday, we're doing 250 volunteer projects. And we just reached 185 this past weekend. And they'll go all the way until the Navy's birthday in October 11th. But if there is anything that does need to help around the community, especially my community here in Waialoa, I would like to keep us in mind, the United States Navy. We are good at all sorts of manual labor. So, let us know what we can do for you. Yeah, we were, if we can keep, and if you have more questions about that, please come see me after the meeting. And online, please reach out to the Council to get my contact information. Lastly, here, I was prepared, actually, our task force, Red Hill, was prepared to give a presentation today. Unfortunately, Joanne Z. Mill is having some issues here. So, I would just, like I said, like to be put on the itinerary for next month of June, so we can give you an update on, with Red Hill and all the remediation that is taking place and what they planned are moving forward.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll do that.
Great. All right, pending your questions, that's my presentation.
Questions from the board? Questions from the community? Questions virtually? TJ, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Ishikawa. So, and I'm sorry, I didn't get, I'm so sorry. I'm really bad with names. What was your name again?
Dan. Daniel Sanford.
Yes. Dan, would you please take my phone number? And could you call me regarding the volunteer opportunities? I'm at 808-238-9427. And if you could do that in the next day or so, we'd like to get some volunteers out for our Kaukau for Kiki program, which is a summer program that we coordinate with the Hawaii Food Bank that keeps, that provides boxes of food, including produce and milk and some proteins for nine weeks during the summer. So, we would really love to have you folks be a part of that. And then, could you also, you were talking about the Navy tours. I think this is something I'd like to bring my nine-year-old grandson to. Can you, is there a phone number or something that we can call to find out when it is? And, you know, if he's old enough or there's a height restriction, things like that?
Absolutely. Let me give you my cell phone number, and this is for anybody here who would like to set up a tour as well. 240...
Yes.
264... 9266. And, yeah. Oh, one more time, that's 240... 264... 9266.
Thank you so much. And then, my last question, that newsletter, you said the Mo'olelo newsletter, is that available online?
It sure is, it sure is. Why don't, it's on several different locations, you can find it online. I will, I will make sure that, that's, we'll get in contact with you, Joanne. And we'll make sure that everybody knows where to access that. But it's published weekly, and it's a great opportunity to see what the latest stuff that we have going on.
Great, yeah, I did have, actually, have some of our Wahaiwa residents who are no longer, I'm sorry, Wahaiwa community members who are living on the continent, and they were most interested in keeping in touch. And they heard about your Mo'olelo newsletter. So, I told them that I would ask if it is something that they could access online, and of course, share the link with them. So, thank you so very much for doing that. I appreciate it.
It's my pleasure.
Any other hands? Okay, I don't see any other hands. So, I think we're good, Daniel. But we'll keep in contact and we'll go over some of the other things.
All right, thanks.
Perfect, thank you. And by the way, how, what did you think of our Leloua, you know, valedictorians? Wasn't that, that was your first experience of being here when we, when we celebrate them? So, did you, did you find it fascinating? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's terrific. Thank you for being here for that, too. Okay, we're gonna go down to item 4B, our government agencies, if I can call up Nicole.
Aloha, Chair, Board, Residents, and Guests. Nicole Rottle, Board of Water Supply. There were no water main breaks in the Waialoa area in April. I'll talk about the May one next month. Uh, just wanted to touch on our water conservation tips for summer. With summer around the corner, it's important to make sure we are saving every drop of water to keep our community strong and sustainable today and for generations to come. So, I have included a couple of magnets on the table and for you folks there, as well as toilet-leaked dye-detection tablets and six-minute shower timers. I did time it. Might have to flick it a little bit, they're kind of old. Uh, but some quick tips to save water this summer. Water your plants early in the morning or in the evening to reduce evaporation. Take shorter showers. Check for toilet leaks. Don't let your faucets run. And apply for BWS rebates on water-efficient appliances and systems. Thank you, Michelle, for that. For more information on how you can conserve water and save on your water bill, go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/SevenWays. If there are any questions or concerns, happy to take those back.
Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, Erin.
Hi, Nicole. The sewer fees, and is that still happening? Like, that's all set in stone?
Um, that is an E and B question. But they are still...
My bad, wrong department.
No, you're fine. Right now, it's still projected to move forward.
Okay.
If Kevin is on, he might be able to touch on that.
Okay, Austin.
I see him.
Sorry to bother you.
I thought I saw him, maybe not.
Hi, Kevin, did you want to join us?
Just kidding, maybe he's not on. But I'll, I can reach out to Rogers team, too, and ask him that.
Maybe we'll come back to him when it's his turn. Any other questions for, from the, from the board? From the community? Virtually, any questions for Board of Water Supply? Okay. Nicole, did you want to hang around for a bit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we're moving on to item B2, which is DOT. And our Representative Fawn is not in at this time. She's on, at a conference. Moving on to item V, item five, Residents Concerned or Community Announcements. Any residents concerned that we need to look into for you? Yes, please come. If you can go to the microphone. Or actually, or you can use this one, or, I mean, right there.
Hello, hello. Name's Neil Honda. I'm wanting to know what's happening with Mango Street, 123 Mango Street. Pastor Khalil Peterson has kind of taken over it. He's turned on electricity, he's turned on the water. He has people living in there with a dog, passing out food. He brought a food truck about two months ago. Two weeks ago, there was a shower truck in there. And then, the way the building is supposed to be run is no one's supposed to be able to live there. Plus, no one should be conducting any kind of business on the property until it's been inspected by the DPP. But I don't know what's happening. I think you guys, as the Wahaiwa Board, should sue, because nobody's taking... Going after these people who had million-dollar grants and has built up this illegal building, and now it's sitting there, and this church is trying to take it over. What is the status? Does anybody know?
Neil, I don't have a current status, but coincidentally, today I got a message to return a call to the pastor. So, I plan on doing that tomorrow to find out what he's...
You know, I...
I don't know any other information, but coincidentally, I just got that, that message.
Yeah, I tried to understand, he's a pastor and stuff, but, you know, I think, even though he should follow the laws, follow rules.
Right.
But to have people living in there and a dog in there, and he says it's security, turned on the electricity, turned on the water, tried to get, and he says he's getting permission still from Nikki Winters, who's, I don't know what happened, but I think the Board should just really sue this and get the money back. The city's not gonna go after, because it's an eyesore for our community. And just like the Wahaiwa playground, somebody's gonna burn it down. Because this is not, it's not being used for... And I think this all started in 2017, when I first spoke to the board. I even went on the news. If you go on the YouTube, you'll see me being interviewed by Rick DeSog and that, the local black activist. This is in 2017. So, I think, please, keep it on your agenda. Please make sure you save and...
Yes, we'll follow. And you are correct, because they came to the board for approval to use that property. And that was with that organization, with the two brothers and, you know, anyway, those individuals, and in that...
And millions of dollars in grant money, appeals, everything.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil.
Chair Ishikawa.
Hold on, one second. I'll call you after I speak to him tomorrow.
No, I actually wanted to answer Mr. Honda's question.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Honda, I'm not sure if you are aware that there was a communication with Councilmember Matt Wire. I'd say two weeks, maybe, that he was putting forth or drafting a resolution to actually have the city condemn that property. So, I'm hoping that either Councilmember Matt Wire is here or a representative from his team is here that can expound on that, that can share more information about whether there is any truth to a resolution being put forth to, again, condemn that property. So, just wanted to provide that information to you, Mr. Honda. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you, TJ, for that. And so, Neil, we'll keep, further down the agenda, we'll find out if someone is here from Councilmember's office. And then, if not, again, to... Great. Got it, okay. He's saying he gotta use a mic, yeah. That's okay, okay. So, basically, everyone, what the concerned citizen is saying that we, we need to know who to report to, so that people are aware what is going on at that location. So, we will try to get more information. We'll find out, again, if Councilmember's office is on, with joining us today. Okay, go ahead.
All right, again, from 2017, it's been a problem. And to have now the pastor to take over it and to have people living there with an animal, you know, if there's a fire again, who's to, who's going to pick up this? When this is supposed to be with Alea Bridge? And Nikki Winters is still giving them permission to bring in food trucks and things, and trying to conduct businesses and run a community shower. And again, DPP has not inspected the building. No business should be conducted on the property. But the minister has run about it, and I don't know how, but then he got water, he's got electricity, he's got people living in there. And somebody's got to take charge of the building and say, hey, this is not right. I'm caring for your church. There's rules and regulations. No one should be living in here. Why is the electricity on? Why is the water on when no business is supposed to be conducted?
Well, the first question is, who gave them permission? Or who gave them a lease?
Doesn't matter, it just gotta stop.
It's gotta stop, right?
It's just been...
It's gotta stop, right? But, but somebody gave keys.
No, but I don't know. It's just gotta stop. Somebody's got us from the community. They say, hey, this is illegal. Stop. Not who gave permission. It's illegal. Stop it.
But we need to, we need all the information, but you're right. That's part of the whole mix-up on, or.
But again, from 2017, it's almost 10 years, gang, you know, and, uh, Google YouTube and look it up. It's crazy. Thank you. And it's an illegal building bought in by the city. Brought in from Honolulu Community College in the middle of the night with police escorts. Uh, no, uh, permission to transport building on the state federal highways. They bring the building in, drop it off and it's a million-dollar mess and city, nobody's taking charge of it and people just taking advantage. Thank you.
Thank you again. Very good. We will follow up on that. Any other residents' concerns or announcements? Oh, yes. If you can, hi, how are you?
Chris Bailey, Leereke College, Wahihua Valley Added Product Development Center. I'm sorry. Is this better? Uh, just had a couple of quick announcements on behalf of the center. The first, wanted to introduce our newish member of our team, uh, Roden Talion. You might've met him just in different events or just around town. He is a Wahihua native. He's our facilities manager. He started with the center late last year. He's a big integral part of our team. Just want to intro him to the community. Roden, you want to share a little about yourself?
Hi guys. Uh, born and raised in Wahihua, uh, Lululela alumni also.
Did you think?
In my heart, I did. But if I did out loud, everybody would stop. So, but, uh, it's great being here and it's, uh, really awesome. Uh, and I'm actually working in Wahihua now, so it's, uh, a great cause that we have here. Uh, we have some announcements with our upcoming market days.
You're, you're, is Teyon.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I know Teyon, that's why I thought you were that family, but okay. Really nice meeting you.
So since starting with us, Roden has just jumped into helping out with facility, all facilities matters, including working for service vendors, upping organized events, including our monthly farmer's market.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if you're around, yeah, he'll give you a tour.
Oh, yeah.
You can feel any sort of complaints to him. We'll give, we'll give his cell phone.
TV, yeah, definitely.
But no, we're really happy to help. So, yeah, just want to introduce him to the group. And then beyond that, I just want to announce, uh, we started a farmer's market. We started in April. So we do it monthly, every third Saturday of the month. So we just had our May edition just last Saturday. It's been a great opportunity to bring in the larger community, highlight our local businesses. So we had, uh, around 15 vendors this last market, including area businesses, including businesses that have gone through LEWARD classes and programs, and we're continuing to build it up. We had about 400, uh, community members come through. We do live demonstrations. We're talking with area schools to be able to have them table to talk about their programs. Maybe sell some of their produce from their ag programs. So we encourage everyone to come out. We do it in partnership with Wahihua Fresh. Uh, and then, yeah, beyond that, I did bring some flyers or some pamphlets. I'll leave it in the back there. Including information if you're interested or you know of anyone that wants to be a vendor with us. Oh, absolutely.
And then the rest can go up with. But thank you. Yeah, I stopped by this past weekend for your, on Saturday. So it was good. Yeah, very good. Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead.
What time is the, is it sure, um, Saturday?
Oh, yes, it's nine to one every Thursday, Saturday.
Chair, can I just?
And then, yes, go ahead, Erin.
So I just want to say thank you. So the Department of Education, the district office, since we don't have an office anymore and meeting space is really tight. I know we've been putting in requests and we've been getting the use of the space free to have some of our bigger events. For example, this summer, we're using our Beginning Teacher Summer Emposium for special education teachers at your value-added center. And I think we're gonna have a leadership meeting there. So just mahalo for lending that space to the Department of Education, you know, while until our building is ready.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's been a joy to work with the DOE in different departments and capacities. So we look forward to continue to do that into the future.
Yeah. Cause that top floor is kind of a multi-purpose floor. Like when we walk through it, that it is cut to, to hold meetings, um, you could do that, right?
Absolutely. So we have a number of flex spaces, including our second floor mezzanine, which is a big kind of open format coworking space. We have a conference room for smaller, more intimate meetings. And then we have our big event loft. And that's the room where we do our farmer's market as well, with full AV setup.
Okay, thank you. Hold on. Any questions virtually? I see one hand up. Is it? Alicia? Alicia?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, I just wanted to, uh, raise another, um, resident concern. Uh, but nothing to do with that.
Alicia, I'm sorry. Can we come back? TJ, did you have something related to?
Yeah.
Have you added? Okay.
Yes, just real quick. Hey, Chris, thank you so much. It was great. I love that guy Brian that does the, uh, Biko coffee with the rice milk. Uh, fabulous. But I'm sorry, I, I couldn't, didn't get the, your facilities manager's name.
Hi, my name is, uh, Roden Talion.
Roden, hi Roden, aloha. And thank you so much. We actually caught the tail end of the first one that was in April. And then this month we went to it and I forgot that you guys were having that knife sharpening guy there. And I meant to grab my knives because I was one of the first 20 that came through. So I hope you bring him back.
Yeah, we're hoping to have him back next month again. So, uh, his name is Jeff from Blade Works.
Great. I look forward to getting my blade sharpened.
All right.
Thank you. And Chris, I'll be in touch with you, uh, real soon. So thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you, TJ.
Thank you TJ. And going back to Alicia.
Hi, Madam Chair. I'd like to request, uh, that, uh, Representative from Queens Hospital be on the next agenda. Um, there's a big concern that, uh, they are uh, providing equipment for, uh, on the hospital on another island who has way less population than we do here. And I was appalled when I had to go to emergency, uh, a few days ago at midnight. Um, there are no facilities around, nowhere near Wahihua. And to have to go to Queens West, they shut down their imaging at midnight and there are nine people waiting. So they turned me away and it was either Queens or Polymomi I had to go to. Um, we have a lot of people in the surrounding area. That's my concern. That they, if they need medical attention, they won't get it. So I'd, I'd like, uh, to know what the update is also with the, there's a lot of people, residents, that, uh, they were surprised that the long-term has been knocked down. And, uh, so I'd like to have some reports made.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. And actually I am in contact with, uh, with, with Queens. Um, because they did about a week and a half ago is when they broke down the long-term care, but that was always part of their plan, you know, so from the beginning of the closure of Wahihua General, it was to just keep and update the emergency room section. So that's what they did first. Um, and then of course they accommodate all our, our first responders and, and the ambulance, you know, EMS area. The breaking down of, or the demolition of the long-term care portion, that was in their plan from the beginning and they did come to our board to talk about that because that side of the facility was very worn down, um, and not usable, basically. So they did do the demolition, but they still have to determine what they're gonna do next. So, um, you know, I have been talking to them about, about the concerns because I have heard others talking about, you know, response time to get to another facility and all that. So they're aware that that situation has happened in Wahihua. And she's keeping me in contact on things that they're, they're looking at or things to improve, you know, services. So, um, you know, but I'll let you know, I mean, right now we don't have anything specific. It's just a little bit talk story kind of situation. But when we do have enough information that they can come and do an update, um, then we'll have that set up. So, um, hopefully we can get that scheduled soon. But thank you, Alicia, because I will update her, uh, with this current information that you're here. I can say that I have another concern from another, you know, Wahihua resident, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for alerting me. Um, in addition to the other people who have, who have called their concerns and, you know, so it's not just one or two, it's a bunch of people, yeah?
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then I see, um, Joe on, online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Good. Uh, on the agenda, under community announcements, there's a, a blurb in there about Wahihua Public Library. And it's, it's not correct.
Oh, it's not because that's what I was told. They're gonna set up a temporary pop-up library in the Wahihua Shopping Center.
For a period of two to three months.
Correct.
It will take two to three months to bid it off, but then it's gonna be open until the new library is built.
Okay.
Two years.
Okay, yeah, the library is two years. Correct. Yeah.
So, okay, we'll be in that temporary location until the new one's available.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the correction. So for, so the correction for everyone's not, um, it, the line says a temporary pop-up library is being set up at the Wahihua Shopping Center for a period of two to three months. But actually, the two to three months is only in reference to the time they need to set up this temporary library. And after that, the facility will be there. Um, you know, maybe you're saying two years, up to two years until the regular library is completed.
Yeah, I, I understand that next month sometime they're gonna be putting up the, uh, the black fence around the building to start, to start the, uh, testing and demolition.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Two to three months?
For?
For the library.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully.
Okay. Okay, fingers crossed. All right. Very good. Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Joe, I'd like to ask you, um, did you get any follow-up on the plans for the new building? Or who, I mean, because they haven't come to the board and.
Yeah, that's, the Department of Education is the one to go to. Uh, it's, this is going to be their building. The library will be a tenant. Uh, and, uh, they've actually, I guess, selected that, that gigantic white facade. We had, we had no input in the community.
So who, Jeannie, who can we as, or talk to?
Well, they actually came, um, she came, was it two, three months ago? She ca, she came to give that presentation. It was a brief presentation.
But there was nothing about.
Correct. We didn't have anything. We didn't have any drawings or anything. Um, and the library, they themselves didn't have any, they, they had the renderings, which Joe is referencing. So they had a renderings, but even the, at the library, they didn't have anything. Um, but supposedly I was told that, that the plans are, were delivered to the library, but the library was already closed. So whether it's gonna be posted hopefully at the sub, you know, library that's gonna be set up at the shopping center. But, so we only had the renderings. We didn't have the plans to, we, you know, so, yeah.
So being it's so contrary to what's ne, what it's next to.
Yeah.
Is there something we can do about that?
I think we're gonna get to answers right now. Did you want to come up to your, either one, either, whichever one?
Chair, community and neighbor, uh, board, um, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. So a lot of questions around the library. I maybe have some answers, hopefully, for you guys.
Okay, can you introduce yourself to us?
Yeah, of course. Uh, Eric Nakamura. Uh, we are the design builder for the new library facility that will be in construction here shortly. So, um, I wanted to address a few things that I heard on the call here today. Um, you're right, we will be starting construction here shortly. You'll probably see a, um, fence being erected, construction fence being erected early June. The library, as you guys probably know, is already closed. They're moving out right now. Um, moving out so that we can go ahead and do the, the new demolition activities, but the site fence will be erected early June. Um, I think I heard a few other things. So the library is the land, they are the building owner. They will be the landlord. Um, DOE will be a tenant on the second floor. As well as University of Hawaii Community College will be a tenant on the second floor. So the library still owns the building. They still own the property. They manage the building through, uh, DAX.
Um, that's not true, Rod. That's not true.
Wait, hold on, Joe. Let it, let him finish and then we'll come back to your, your information. Stand by. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, what else did I hear? Uh, the, I think I did hear that the pop-up, pop-up, uh, facility will be open late June is what I was told. So late June, expect the temporary facility to be open across the street at the Wahihua, uh, that, um, shopping center there. Um, I will commit to coming as much as I can monthly to the meetings and give, uh, everyone updates as the construction progresses. So you'll see me probably here every month. So hopefully, uh, you guys get to know me and I can, of course, field questions at these meetings. But my goal here is to make sure everyone's informed, make sure you guys know what can impact you, uh, and what you guys need to, uh, be aware of. So that's my goal.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
And the state librarian had no input. The building is not under the control of the library. It's Department of Education. Library is part of the Department of Education, but we, we're not controlling the building.
Uh, so our contract, you're correct, Joe, our contract is with the Department of Education. Um, but that does not disregard the fact that library still owns the building. Library does have a lot of input on the, on the, on their facility, on their building. Um, but our contract, you're right, is with Department of Education.
Right. We, uh, we had, we didn't have any input into the design of the building either. I'm not sure you guys at, at Keywood did either, but.
Um, I mean, um,
they're concerned.
Yeah, um, what we've, what we have done or tried to do at least is, uh, keep the community involved. Um, we did have, um, our early outreach, early in January, reach out to the community. Um, and, uh, we did post the open house early February, uh, February 20th, where we showed the plans based off of the research, showed a few options on the screen like you mentioned. Um, got some community feedback on that. That was on a Thursday and we left the boards up until the following Tuesday. Um, but you're right, that's, that's, uh, that's probably the amount of input that we've received from the community to date.
I've, I've, I've heard a lot of complaints about the facade being out of place for that corner, especially an extra judiciary building. It's, this doesn't feel right.
Yeah, I guess I'm not here prepared to talk about the design per se.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Eric. I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I, um, yeah, I just, uh, we were trying to match the civic center facade colors. So the faci, civic center has a dark CMU color in the bottom, later in the top. That's kind of what, or, or the library, your library will kind of mimic that design on set. Any other?
Yeah, Michelle.
Of course.
When we saw a rendering of it and it didn't look anything like what the civic center's gonna look like. And so it's competing and not matching up at all, not looking anything like Wahihua. And so when you say you've kept the community involved, when have you come here in front of the board showing us the renderings? And, or, or options? Yes.
Sure. Um, I guess I, I haven't done that to your point. I'm not here to the board meeting here. Um, we did not come and present, have a formal presentation here at the board. Uh, we chat, we chose to do that at our open house facility, uh, open house event on the January, um, or sorry, February date. Uh, that's where we presented, uh, the design. We did not present here to your point.
So is it too late to make changes?
Um, it is, it is late in the game to make, to make changes to the design of the building, yes.
Okay, well, that's very disappointing.
Sorry, yep.
Yeah, typically, Eric.
Yes.
With a event like this, uh, there wouldn't have been a charade or something like that for the community to review possible different designs. Your open house didn't quite come up to that standard, but it was, it was at least something.
So I think, um, number one, number one, Eric, thank you for being here.
Of course.
Cause, cause, um, better late than never, as they say, right? Cause at least we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be talking. We're gonna start working together.
Of course.
We, whatever we can, like, like you said, it's, it's, or, or like Michelle said, it's late. And so maybe we won't have any comments. Maybe there is an opportunity for us to comment or look over things. But I think, I think, um, if you don't mind, that I think the first mistake that happened is I'm just, I'm actually, I can't even, I can't even place it, you know, but the fact that your group decided to not have a community meeting, to have it at your, at the library. It is surprising to me because how would the community have known that there was a meeting at, you know what I mean? How would anybody know?
At the, at the library.
At the library. I mean, you might, you know, you might have a, I mean, there was, I did see the, but no, you know, the general public, because normally we put it out there.
Yeah.
Get a good turnout.
Understood. I mean, I did come to the January meeting and do announcement about, about the open house in February. Um, so that was a month. About the open house in February. Um, so that was a month.
Yes, additional information, but I think in general, now that we are gonna be in contact, at least we can will at least tell us if there are areas that we can opine on.
Absolutely.
If, if it's like late in the game and nothing we say is gonna matter, then we need to know that as well.
Okay.
You know, to be fair, and I think Sylvia has a question.
Yeah, a question real quickly for Joe regarding the library being moved to the Foodland Shopping Center area. Is there enough room in there for all the books and everything? Cause I know the, you know, the old DOE building on California Avenue, that is somewhat empty too.
That, that building on California Avenue is going to be part of the new construction of a, of a three-story building where the library is gonna go. Uh, they get an office out of that.
But what is going to happen to the old building that's there now?
Their old building will probably, I think the plan is to move the, uh, the school there, the, uh, uh, can't remember the name. What's the name of the school?
Storefront.
storefront school, yeah. I think that's going to be moving into that space. As far as the temporary library, library location, no, you're absolutely right. We can't fit forty thousand books in there. So it'll probably be a very small fraction. Uh, there'll be.
What's gonna happen to the rest of the books?
They're gonna be in storage or sold. We, we had several sales before the closing of the library, just to cut down. But rest of them will go to the big friends downtown and they'll have a book sale eventually.
At the shopping center, are they using the two, um, empty storefronts or just one?
My understanding is, is just the, uh, the former jeans warehouse, which is one.
Okay, cause there, there are actually two there, that's why. There's two empty ones, okay.
It's not a very, it's not gonna be a very large space.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, community? Cause I see, um, I have one, I have TJ, hold on one second. Anyone, community questions? Okay, TJ, you had a question?
Yes, I did. I did. Eric, uh, thank you for, uh, thank you for coming tonight and sharing what you did. Uh, like Cherry Shikawa said, better late than never. But, um, I wanted to ask, so being the, uh, and, and Joe, you can help me out with this. Being that Waihua Library was one of the first built, Joe, is that correct?
We were the first community library in the, in Oahu.
Okay, great. So we were the first public library, community library on Oahu. As far as the, um, like they did with the civic center and the, um, for lack of a better term, the old police station, the old courthouse, will any of the, um, uh, stones or the rocks that are currently there, will any of those things be incorporated into the new design?
That'd be a great question.
Yeah.
Great question. Um, what we're trying to do is incorporate, there's a perimeter rock wall along that corner. As you go down Lehuwa, turning the corner on California, we're trying to preserve that, um, keep that intact as much as we can. Repair is what we needed. Uh, we do like that feature of that wall. Want to try to present, uh, keep that as much as possible. Um, the lava rock on the library itself, um, unfortunately, we, we tried to find a reuse for that. I don't know if we're gonna be able to on the, on the wall itself, but, um, we're trying to keep that, that little rock wall around the perimeter of the site.
Okay, Eric, if you don't mind, you have a pen with you. I would like for you to take my phone number and please call me. Uh, if you don't mind, uh, eight zero eight two three eight nine four two seven. Again, eight zero eight two three eight nine four two seven.
Got it, TJ. Yep.
Yeah, and so I, I really, um, again, uh, it has already been expressed, so I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. But I was very disappointed to see how little, um, public communication was made to our community. Again, about your open house and things of that nature, because, uh, if you've been in our community long enough or even for just a smidge of time, you should know that our Waihua Neighborhood Board, our Waihua Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board, um, encourages projects coming into our community to please come and visit the board meeting, um, at the time of, uh, concept inception. Like how the, um, I think it's, I forget the name of the general contractor for the civic center, but, um, Ms. Elaine um, Romualdo, how she, uh, came to the meetings to share, um, so I would. Yeah, it's just, it's not a great taste in our mouth. But again, we do appreciate you coming tonight and, you know, sharing what you did. So if you don't mind though, if you could give me a call so we can talk about those rocks, I really appreciate it.
Of course. Yep, would do.
Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Any other questions? Any other hands? No question? Okay, Eric, are you gonna hang around for a little bit? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. Any other announcements, public announcement? Just come up, Warren.
My name's Warren Gualdarama. Um, it was about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, we were talking about the, the kids riding the wheelies and stuff on their off-road bikes up and down California Avenue and on, uh, Rose Street.
Warren, can, can you turn the mic towards you? Yeah, great. Thank you.
I need to repeat?
Yeah, you can start over. It's okay.
Um, so about a year ago, we were talking about the off-road vehicles and the kids riding wheelies up and down the street. Last, uh, May twenty-fourth last year was the graduation and, and the kids were riding wheelies up and down past my car while we're stopped in graduation traffic. And on the twenty-fifth, I reached out to one of our board members. And the response I got from them was, why don't I do something about it myself? Um, anyway, that's not my issue today. Uh, we have graduation coming up. I'm wondering if there's anything being sent out to the kids for around graduation time before they're out of school. And I'm bringing this up because yesterday a young man rode his motorcycle into the wall across the street from my house. Uh, the only thing I know is two hours after he left in the ambulance, he was still unresponsive. I'm not sure his condition right now. The, the rim of the motorcycle was destroyed and his head with no helmet hit the wall. So I'm, I'd really like to know if we could get something out there for them and maybe we could try to push these things through that are kind of stalemated right now.
Okay, so Warren, thank you for letting us know, um. I hope, I'm, I'm not sure what happened to that individual. I'm hoping he's okay or she's okay. But I can, um, you know, HPD was here earlier and I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow. I'll give him a call to find out if there's any, um, regulations, any things that have been set up or what, if there is any information. I do remember, at least I recall, at last month's meeting, you know, he did say it's, it's difficult. Um, situation, yeah, but let me give him a call tomorrow and I can find out if there's any information that's being discussed. I'm not sure, but you know, and maybe this is something our council member can help us with too. We can, you know, put a call there to see if anything, um, is moving on in that direction, because we can't be the only area that's running into this problem with the bikers and wheelies and stuff.
I'm pretty sure it's island-wide.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that, but we'll, we'll do a follow-up. We'll look into it. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns, announcements?
Cherry Shikawa.
Uh, yes, go ahead, TJ.
Hi, thank you. So I just had a couple announcements. Um, I see on our agenda that you, uh, we had some information about the upcoming Memorial Day celebration that is being co-hosted by the North Shore Chamber of Commerce and also the Waileu Alliance Club. So it is next, uh, it is Saturday, May twenty-fourth from nine AM. And we welcome everyone to come and join us. Um, also letting you know that I do sit on the Board of Directors for the North Shore Chamber of Commerce. So, uh, we like to invite everyone to come down to the monument at, um, Haleiwa Beach Park. And then, um, sorry, just a couple, two quick ones. We also have the, again, as I mentioned earlier, the Call Call for Kaki program. Um, we are still, uh, the, I just spoke with a contact at Hawaii Food Bank before we started this evening. And they still have lots of room. So if you are a family with Kaki, whether you be the parent, the grandparent, the auntie, the uncle, please reach out to the Hawaii Food Bank, uh, for an application. This is for families in the nine six seven eight six zip code. Again, this is, uh, Waihua is fortunate enough to be one of these, um, communities that will be serviced by this USDA, uh, project. So, um, it starts, uh, June third, so please reach out to the Hawaii Food Bank. By now, everybody should have my phone number. If you, um, need it, please reach out to Chair, eight oh eight. Anyway, never mind. I'll just give it to you, eight oh eight two three eight nine four two seven, Call Call for Kaki. And on that note, we are also looking for volunteers. I will be reaching out to the Army and the Navy contacts. But, um, we are always looking for volunteers to help with the Call Call for Kaki program and I will be the point of contact for that. So, uh, please reach out to me, but, uh, thank you, Chair. Appreciate the time. Uh, have a nice evening. And I'm sorry, I'm still here though.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, TJ. All right, I believe that would be it for announcements and, and, um, questions. So moving on to item six, we do have one presentation today. Rules of decorum, all participants at this meeting shall extend the spirit of aloha to one another. There shall be no displays of disrespect to one another. Public comments can be made within the stated time limits and without interruption unless the comments are offensive and or out of order and are not conducive to civil discourse. Our presentation tonight is an update on the Waihua Freshwater State Park Project. And our presenters are from HHF Planners. Are they on?
I'm here. Hi, Cherry Shikawa.
Hi.
Hi, um, thank you for having us here this evening. Uh, do you have a copy of the slides? Um, that I, we'd like to use, or do you want me to share my screen?
If, yeah, we don't have it. Yeah, we don't have, if you could share your screen, if you don't mind.
I, I could do that. Um, just give me a second. Sorry about that. Let me make sure I pull it up. There we go. Can you see that?
Yep, good. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, um, again. My name is Corlin Orr.
Corlin, can you stand by when we're gonna turn off the lights on our side, if you don't mind? Stand by.
Sure, sure.
Oh, thank you. Okay, you're good to go.
Okay, thanks. So my name is Corlin Orr. I'm a planner with HHF Planners. Uh, we're a land use planning firm based out of downtown Honolulu. And I'm here tonight. Um, actually joining you from Honolulu in East Oahu. Um, also, we have tonight with us on screen, um, Scott Eizer, who's a principal with HHF. Renee Kamisugi, who is with Division of State Parks and Melissa Agbayani, who's with um, DLNR's Engineering Division. So that we're working with them on this project. Um, the primary reason for us being here tonight is to give you, um, an update on what we've done with the master planning process. And also to let you know that we do have a draft EA that was published and is out for public review. So I'd like to just let you know how you can review that and, um, provide written comment on that. We, we were here twice before. Um, the first time we were here, we were, we provided a presentation to the board was in September twenty twenty-one, when we just were starting out on the project. And then a second time in November of twenty twenty-three, when we had a few different, um, planning up alternatives, and we were looking for input from the board and from the general public at that time. Um, so for reference, if I can just quickly show you, um, this is, this is just a general location map of the Waihua Freshwater State Recreation Area. It's about sixty-six acres, um, managed by DLNR's State Parks Division. Uh, you can see here, the main entrance is off of, it's this red, uh, blob is where the main entrance is. It's off of Walker Avenue. It's about a sixty-six acre total acreage. Um, and it's the only freshwater park on the island that has a boat ramp and, um, has access to freshwater fishing on Lake Wilson. So Lanaquila Pacific, the entrance to Lanaquila Pacific comes through the park. Um, just for some context, Waihua Middle School is to the right of it. Um, Schofield Barracks is surrounding down below. Um, and the park was first built in nineteen seventy-eight when construction was, um, first completed. So just for context, that's the park. Um, this right here is a image of the proposed conceptual plan and all of this is in the draft EA. In the draft EA, we go through a thorough description of the different elements and also the analysis of the different, um, resource areas. Um, to get through this point of this conceptual plan, we went through a planning process that lasted a few years. Um, we had an advisory committee. We, we had five or six meetings with that advisory committee where we talked about what kind of improvements, um, the community would want to see for the park. Um, we had an open house event in the park itself. We did a survey. This was available on, through State Parks website. Um, and we also were at the Day at the Lake event, um, last year in twenty twenty-four. So, um, this plan itself, some of the key elements here. The pink lines are really walking trails and pathways. So you can see that pink dash line that kind of routes through the park, goes down by the, the water side and, and through the different parts of the park, come back to the parking lot. Um, so about a mile and a half loop trail. The other thing that is being proposed are better access to the shoreline with some fishing pads and some platforms that you could use um, for fishing. And, and we've identified those sites with the aquatic resources staff. And, and there's eleven different sites that they had thought would be, um, potential areas to put in pads. Uh, some other things, we're showing a outdoor space for about two hundred to two hundred fifty audience and outdoor performance space. And it's this, this brown, brown build. It's not a building, it's a pad. It's like an outdoor amphitheater space, um, behind the existing bathroom area. And it is a little bit depressed, um, in terms of topography. So we thought it would be a nice space to do an amphitheater. Um, also a one acre native landscape restoration area. You know, forests, some forest area, some native plants, um, and it's a more of a demonstration project. There is also some clearing to create some open grass area and then a disc golf space. And this would be a temporary, temporary space to set up, um, this, this golf is with nets. It's like frisbee golf with big net. So you could set up the nets, you could take them down and also have this, um, open area for other types of uses. The other things being proposed, um, in terms of facilities would be a multi-divisional facility for DLNR staff use and that would be, um, up on the, the upper section of the park near the Transformer Station. And, um, right now it's just a, some, some trees and, and not very developed. So we're showing it up in this area here near the parking, sort of near Lanaquila Pacific driveway. Um, and then site furnishings in general, some two pavilions with picnic tables to host educational or family type events, um, some additional sorry, picnic tables, some new signage, additional safety barriers along where we're, we're putting in these fishing areas, because one of the things we heard was that the, um, the, the rap, the banks of the, the stream were steep and of concern. Um, and then additional parking. And then additional parking, right now, there's a hundred parking spaces. And we would be adding between about twenty additional parking stalls. Um, all of this is in the draft EA. And I just wanna let you know, here's some information about the draft EA itself. It was published April twenty-third. And it's a thirty-day public comment period by law. The comment period ends May twenty-third. Unfortunately, we couldn't get to you sooner to let you know um, that this is out there and, and available for review. It is online, this is the link here, I'm sorry if it's so long and difficult to, to copy down. Um, but it is available online. It is also available at this, the main library downtown. Typically, it, it would be available at the Wahihua Library. Um, I did call and try to get it sent to the Mililani Library. I haven't been able to confirm that it is available there yet. Um, and so sending in your written comments, you could email it. Or you could mail it to these addresses here. Um, our phone numbers are on there as well. If you do need more time, please reach out and let us know. We do understand that May twenty-third is right around the corner, so. Um, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to present. Thank you.
Thank you Corlin, um, board member, oh, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation, that was really good. Uh, my question is, there's a lot of homeless in this area. And what are the plans for that? How are we going to uh, update this and make it nice? But we still have a lot of uh, houseless and homeless in the area.
Um, I, I can say that that was one of the big concerns that came up repeatedly in our meetings. And through all of the conversations we've had. Um, the homeless, from, from my understanding, is that the caretaker within the park boundaries. Does a really good job of addressing homeless within the park boundaries. And so it's everything that's happening outside the park, which is beyond State Parks' control. Um, one of the things that we do talk about is. When you do have public spaces and you have them actively used. You tend to get less homeless, less geriatric type of activities. So that is, that's not the answer you're looking for, I know that doesn't solve the homeless problem. But those are the things that we've discussed and, and have talked about.
Uh, thank you for that response, no, I appreciate that. My uh, other question is, you know, I saw in your pink areas there where you have the walking trails. Um, how safe is it? I guess, yeah, how safe is it, knowing that there are lots of people living in the bushes?
Right, that is, that is a concern. I think we would start within a, within a half of the park that is more used right now. And then, and then slowly maybe do a phase two as it gets to be more actively used. Um, and the homeless issue is a larger issue than what State Parks alone can, can. Uh, answer, accomplish.
Hi, I was wondering about the amphitheater. And how large it's gonna be, what the capacity would be for people. You know, watching whatever's happening, who can use it? Is it set up for sound equipment or will it have a cover, things like that?
So we're in the very early conceptual planning stages, so we don't have any design elements right now. Um, we did share some different options of, you know, more rustic type of amphitheaters that we have seen. Um, this one would be targeted for two hundred to two hundred fifty audience size. Um, it would probably be more natural type seating areas, terraced. Um, trying to do minimal concrete paved spaces. I would imagine that it would be covered just because of, you would want shade for your performers. Right now, we don't have electrical hookups planned for it. You would have to bring in your own temporary equipment. We've targeted, I believe, one event per quarter. And I think, I think it would be, well, the way it was originally discussed with the advisory committee was. It would be for your local type, maybe your hula halau or your dance performance group. At the Day at the Lake event, when they had entertainment, there was taiko drumming, there was hula, there was some singing. And, and they did their activities in that area. Um, where we're looking at to put in the amphitheater. Um, and I believe State Parks would look to have a vendor or a third party to help manage it, like a nonprofit group. I'm not sure, those are all things that still need to be worked out though. Cause we are very early in the conceptual stage in terms of the, the management of it. Um, it's not meant for nighttime events, there, there will be no nighttime events. Because one of the things we also heard was that. That the, the high-rise, not the high-rise, but the apartment buildings are right next door to the Senior Housing Center. Um, and, and you know, it's just not, it's just not intended for nighttime use. After hours.
And thank you for coming early to us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and um, I see Joe and then TJ.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Orr, I apologize, I missed the beginning of your talk. Does that, the back of uh, Wahihua Middle School, does that connect to that walking path?
It does not connect right now, the property boundary does butt up on the middle school. Um, but right now, there's no intention to, to carry the path all the way through there.
Good, thank you, that's all I needed to know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and TJ?
Hi, thank you so much, and thank you, um, Corlin for coming out and uh, sharing the information. But I just had two questions, I think only two, and I did actually bring my mom out to the open house, so thank you for doing that. But um, my first question is, beside Renee, besides Renee Kamisugi. Has anyone else from the team actually been to that park and walked? Because currently, there are um, trails that at one time could be used to go fishing. Along um, the banks of Lake Wilson. Has anyone from your team, of course Renee, aside from Renee? Have anybody from your team walked those trails? Um, to see what we as the community members that live here, what we see? So maybe this is a two-part, have you walked the trails that are currently there for fishing? And have you been on the lake itself and seen um, the types of activity that are going on? Um, regarding the uh, homeless and those that are living along the banks of Lake Wilson? Because while it may not be particular to this project. Um, I think all of us are concerned that these activities are happening on the lake. Um, and then I'll wait, I'll let you answer that, and I just have one more quick question after.
So, yes, um, I have the park. Um, and I haven't walked all of those trails down to the, the lake, but I have walked several of them. Um, in, in identifying the trails and the, the, the fishing areas. We worked with um, aquatic resources staff who is very familiar, who are very familiar with those trails. And also, um, we had Ray. Um, sit down with us and, and we talked with Ray about the, the, the pathways and also the homeless issue. So, and our advisory committee, um, we've had lots of conversation about those things.
Okay.
I forget the second part of your question.
Oh, I'm sorry, call him Mike. I saw Renee over there, that's why like, like she was waiting, sorry, call him Mike.
Can I, can I just step in and, and Corlin Mahalo for a wonderful presentation? Thank you, um, you guys worked really hard on this project. Um, TJ, and, and I think there was a couple, so let me try and help in filling the pukas in case, um. Let me paint a, a little bit. Uh, additional picture. Um, part of the trails, right? And um, when we did outreach to the Lana Keela community or the Lana Keela group. You know, the clients shared that they want um, access. Access meaning that they can have smoother walking paths to the lakefront. Um, many of them did not necessarily share that they wanna go fishing, but they have done the walk before in the past. And they want continued access. That group also shared that um, they want to picnic outside as well. And so we, we put um benches, we've been doing covered um, picnic benches. As well as um, we're hoping the disc golf will also encourage their participation onto that area. Um, and so just this past week, we brought our ADA coordinator to the site to best see. How we can accommodate these activities for that um, to service the, the Lana Keela group as well. Um, and, and, and the trails, you know, um, there are, right? We all know, being from Wahihua, we all know that there was a natural trail. Or what was, appeared to be natural from the school to the park. And we've had feedback to continue to open that up for additional walking spaces. Um, right now, the area is closed only because we're still planning out that section in the back. But once we um, start opening that into construction, the park would probably remain open. Um, all in the back. But the walking paths that we are referencing is within that top area in the backspace. Um, where we designated the um, disc golf and that um, uh. Cor, if you can put where, highlight the one that has the pink lines, yep. So we have the pink lines and we're not fixed on exactly, you know, the, where the pink lines are. But in general, utilizing those spaces um, to create walking paths um, in and around the area. And then through the disc golf um, course. Um, I'm trying to remember all the things that you guys shared, but does that kind of cover some of your guys' questions and concerns?
Um, yeah, actually, thank you, it, it does, it's um, you know, uh. I've had many conversations with Ray as well, Ray is my cousin, truth be told out there. And we've had, um, you know, and he knows what we've done as far as community members. Um, you know, trying to do our best to reach out to those. Um, to those that mean want our assistance such as the, the homeless. And Renee, you and I have had extensive conversations about this project. So I'm glad to see that you, um, glad to see it moving along and that you're coming and sharing these things with us. And then I guess my last question would be, um. Being that um, that area, as we all know, has multiple ownerships, right? With, uh, especially um, the area where the Avocado Street building is, we've got the state. Uh, we've got federal uh, military. And then we've, we've got um, private landowners. Uh, let's see, so how are conversations being held with the military and other maybe neighboring? Or other landowners that might not be exactly um, owning property here? But would, you know, would have adjacent ownership of property, uh. Uh, that would be owners of adjacent properties, excuse me, not sure if I got that out right.
Are you referring to the um, right when we come into the Avocado Walker area? Where, where? Yeah, okay, we, we haven't had any additional conversations with the landowners per se in terms of the feds and whatnot. Um, we are in discussion as a DLNR family. Um, with, you know, that one area that um, Dokeare may um, take over that area. Um. But are, are you, are you guys implying or inferring that? Um, it's that area that you got, that are in question in terms of the homeless activities? And therefore, as landowners? What's the solution? Is that, is that what you're, is that what you're asking?
Actually, I guess because uh, you know, that area too, yeah Renee, I guess I'm just wondering if that's, is that, uh, you know, is that even a conversation? That needed to be had for this project? But you know, again, just curious because um, you know, I'm also thinking about the increased traffic for that area. From uh, off of Kamehameha onto Avocado and eventually that right turn onto Walker. And then, of course, exiting the park on Walker and then going out toward uh McDonald's. And again, these are all two-lane highways that are very um, uh, although they meet the highway standards and whatnot. Um, the increase in traffic, maybe tour buses, I don't know, it's big tour buses or sixteen passenger vans and things of that nature. So I guess just um, wanting to know what your folks' thoughts are on that.
So I noticed that there's that, a, a huge apartment structure coming up. Um, I was kinda surprised on that, I, I don't often drive that way. And the last time I was at the park, I didn't see that big apartment structure coming up right before the park. But um, you know, this last few years, and we're gonna have it again, the Day at the Lake, right? And, and we've had it, I mean, for years, right? And then we kinda just recently started to bring it back this last few years. And at any given time, we've did, we did people count of about anywhere from two to three hundred something people. Few years ago, we had Royal Hawaiian Bank come. And for the most part, we did not have traffic issues. And that's just because people were staggering, you know, they come and go as they please. Um, as well as many of the residents who did stop by, they um, walked, right? Um, they, so that was kinda nice to see some um, familiar faces who live around the community. Um, well, you know, we, we, that was one of the questions about utilities into the space. We actually don't intend to um, install utilities near or around the amphitheater, not at this point, right? Only because we thought that the day use was um, suffice. And the, the time that we've been using seems to be suffice, right? People bring their own speakers or generators and, and whatnot, um. With the community's input, they also did not want the park to be openly. And we, we don't have the infrastructure in terms of park lighting and whatnot. Um, so you know, I, I know this will ring a lot of memories for many of you. But when we grew up and we had our pineapple festivals and our events, it was at Halekoi, it was at Wahihua District Park. With, with our hula with, and now taiko, right? And all this um, events, and I think that's the type of environment we still wanna encourage, just possibly in a different space. And so um, yeah, I don't, I don't get the impression we're gonna um, have late night, um.
Activity.
Yeah, hard, no, no, um, and, and for the most part, and I, and I can go and double check. But our special use permits that we've been having in the parks are, are passive recreation, right? The disc golf, um, the fishing, the, the fishing clubs, um, monthly events. Um, and then at one point Surf the Nation was pulling some of our special use permits to feed the homeless. I don't think they have been doing that recently, within the last few years. Um, they're, they have their own um, outreach food distribution program. But um, yeah, for the most part, I'm, I'm really actually impressed. And if ever you guys wanna meet out there, we can. But early in the morning, there's actually a lot of walkers, early in the morning and in the evening, there's actually a lot of walkers that. Probably are within the neighborhood, right? Who's coming in and utilizing the space. So I definitely acknowledge the use of, of trails and, and um, spaces to exercise. And, and I think that's one of the things that we do encourage, right? If, if there's people who wanna do yoga class or, you know, any of these at, exercise classes, that, that's definitely an option. Um, we, we, we've considered um, public-private partnership. And I just don't, I, I mean, currently, right now, where things are at, I don't get the impression we're gonna generate. Or the, that group is gonna generate a whole lot of money. Um, it's, it's a park that's well-used for passive recreation, right? Most of us go grab our lunch and then we just park and we eat and we look at the water and fish and whatnot. Um, I think also with. I think also with the fishing pads and, and um or uh coordination with aquatics, we definitely want to pursue that um options. But right now, the one person, our one contact just retired with aquatics and so I haven't replaced him. But yes, we definitely intend to um put out fishing pads and um you know, encourage more spaces for them to fish.
Great, great. Thank you, Renee. Thank you, Corlin. Appreciate you guys. Looking forward to this.
I was gonna, June, do you have your hand up?
Got a question on the um proposed or I don't know if you plan to do that in the future, to you mentioned linking up with the Wahe'aua Middle School. I don't think that's gonna be very practical because um they demolished the bridge and that was an only, that was the only link from that side going to the middle school. So um unless you're planning to build another bridge, I don't think that's very practical.
So I don't know if you've been in that area recently. It's now closed off within the last year, but prior to it being closed off, there was foot, you can access by foot and only because the water levels are low that allows you to walk all in that back area. So you're, you're right that the bridge is no longer there and it's, it's kind of caved in and, and only the remnants. But um, you, you could continue to walk in that area and, and.
I would not recommend that for the public. I've been there.
We're not showing a connection? Our plan doesn't show a connection um for.
Yeah, if you're not gonna build a bridge, I would not even mention to people to go there because it's not safe. Yeah, and it's, and then if there's high, higher water levels, uh, it, it definitely will not be safe.
Okay, thank you, June. And so I have um Erin and then I'll myself and then that'll be it. Because we have a lot of other stuff to go through our agenda. So this is great information, but Erin, go ahead.
Okay, um currently on the website, um thanks for sharing. It's nice to see uh the beautification, extension of public spaces. Uh, but currently on the website, it says that one of the hazards is that there's no swimming. Is there someone monitoring the water quality? And how dangerous is it if someone go with an open cut? Are they gonna get staph infection? Is there E. coli? Is there someone monitoring the water with the active use of it? I imagine more kiki will put their feet in the water and yeah, and so how is that being dealt with and is someone monitoring the water quality?
Renee, do you know? Can you answer that, Renee? Because. Um, as of right now, I do not think that anybody is monitoring the water. I, I, I don't know. I think the last time we brought that up with aquatics, they've done it years ago with DOH, but I don't know if anyone has taken um additional tests.
I got an answer for that. They, there's um the water is polluted like all water on this island or practically in the state because of rats. And um, when they urinate, they they um, they're, they're carriers of a worm, so. And um, that was discussed with the neighborhood board at least twenty something years ago. And they said it's, it'll never be clean. It'll never be safe.
Okay, thank you, June. Because actually, that's one of the, so um, hi Corlin and, and Renee and Scott, thank you for being here. I have, um, and I want to tell Scott, thank you very much for, for talking story with me with, with the phone call. But um, since that phone call in preparation for tonight's meeting, I did talk to a bunch of different people just to get their ideas. So I have seven questions or seven um things that I want to relay to you folks. Just for, and you don't have to answer it now because we're running short on time. But the first one is what, what June just asked. And it's a funny question because the couple said, ask them why they call it a freshwater park when the part, when the water is so dirty. And they should check into it. And I thought that was kind of funny, but, but they did say, you know, why do they call it a freshwater park? When the water is so dirty, it's probably polluted, is what was said. So um, any comment on that one?
I, I would say that it's a freshwater park because it's not a saltwater park, right? All other parks are ocean and this is the only one that is inland um with a, a.
But isn't it a little misleading because people think freshwater, so you think it's freshwater? You know, but the water, because the last time I went, which is two years ago, I mean, the water was really murky. Yeah. So anyway, that was, I mean, I, I thought it was a cute question, but they were serious. They said, no, it's really dirty. You gotta go see it, you know, so. If, if their, their thought was that if you're gonna renovate and build, think of a new name, you know, because who's going into that water? Nobody goes into that water, basically. So that was one. Uh, the second one is um, are you folks looking at trimming down the trees? Because even though it's gonna be a great project, because everyone did think it was a great project, um the people I spoke to. Um, and various people, you know, people, some I didn't know, I just asked people, let me talk to somebody so I can get really honest, you know, answer, I mean, questions. But the other question was that it would be a great park, but there's so many trees that it, it casts an overcast, so the park looks dark. So I did drive to the park too, and it is actually, there is, there are a lot of trees, so it does cast. Uh, it's not as, it's not a sunny, bright area because there are so many trees. So that's another question that would they consider that to make it, you know, beautiful like any other a park, part that, you know, it would be manicured, would be beautiful, would be, people would want to come because it's open, it's, you know, it's clean, it's not all tall, overgrown trees. So that's something else to think about. What would be the cost to add more? This is number three. What would be the cost to add um more than one person? I know you have a great uh worker there now, but if this, if this project goes and it gets more busy and people do come, will there, will you be able to hire more people, you know, staff or employees? So that, you know, everything, the rubbish is picked up, you know, like any other, like Alamoana Beach Park, because when they're all driving around, picking up trash, emptying the trashcans. Would it be like this where, where the goal is to really utilize this park? Will there be more than one person um hired on board? The next one was the um oh fees. Will there, once the park is open, will there be fees or continue to be open, free to the public? And I think you already mentioned this, and will there be more uh walkways, open space, uh picnic tables? And again, with increasing, increase of people at the park to have staff, maintenance staff driving around so that people feel safe because there, there's somebody driving around, emptying the trash or checking on, on things. So I just wanted to share those um with you. And I can type it up and send it over as written comments, but these did come from different people from Wahe'aua. So did you have any comments on those?
I don't have any comments um other than thank you. Those are very good points. In terms of the trees, I think there are some trees that would be cut down around the open lawn and also some of the Disc Golf area in particular. And I think you're right that taking some of that down and, and creating these pathways would, would take away some of that like sense of places where people can hide or places where people could, that, you know. In terms of the caretaker, that's a Renee question and, and the fees and, and, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you know, not, not to belabor this, but you know, on your front page of your document, the Wahe'aua Freshwater Park, the first photo is full of trees. If you look and it's actually the trees cast a shadow over the grass area and everything, so. I think there, excuse me, I think there are a lot of trees in that area, so um I will, I will type this up and send it over to you guys um as comments from the public. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
It's um, the, the contact information is on that slide. We have a email address, Wahe'auaFreshwaterEA@hhf.com. You could send it there. My phone number is on there, four five seven three one six eight.
Thank you. Keyboard members, any other questions? Community, any questions? Okay, thank you again for coming tonight and for the present and um meeting. I mean, it's, it's good. We just want to be part of it to help you guys, um however we can from our side, you know, to gather information or, or work with you to make this a success because it is exciting. But I, I gotta say, it is kind of a cute question of why do they call it a freshwater park? Because it, it really, I, I didn't have an answer for that, but if you folks have any comments that I can later on, if I can take back to these seven individuals, I think they'd appreciate an answer too, but thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Okay, we're gonna move on to our item seven for our elected officials. Um, do we have the mayor's representative, Kevin?
Aloha Chair Chicago and Board Members, Kevin O'Jay, City and County of Honolulu. Just some quick highlights from the mayor's newsletter this month. See, I lost, lost my page. We're recruiting more guardians at Leetum to help with assisted community treatment programs for Oahu's homelessness. Uh recreational fish, fishing is returned to Home Outluu Hia Botanical Gardens. Uh, we unveiled a massive solar canopy at Bladestale Center to celebrate Earth Day. And we had our first Malama Aina Day uh on Oahu's North Shore, Kahuku. And all of that information can be found in the mayor's newsletter, www.honolulu.gov backslash mayor backslash newsletter. Um, quick announcement from DP, Department of Parks and Recreation, uh enrollment and summer fun has begun. Um, and you can find uh the enrollment sites at HTTPS bit.ly backslash summer fun map. Um, and you can uh apply, I guess, also there online. All the applications are being taken online. We're also looking for summer fun uh workers. So lots of jobs available. Again, that's at HTTPS bit.ly backslash summer fun job. And if you need to find the District Park where your local program is located, that can be found at HTTPS bit.ly backslash Oahu Park Map. So let us know if you have any questions about that. Um, at the, I guess we didn't have a, a meeting last, last month. Um, and I think at the meeting before that, uh Chair, Board Member Harvest asked a question about the handy van pickup. And if we could have a handy van, handy van pickup every thirty minutes becomes, because sometimes the van comes ten to fifteen minutes late. DTS responded that the city's handy van operator, Oahu Transit Services is currently manually scheduling trips on the hour. But it's working to improve operations in the interval between available pickup times. OTS is working on hiring additional drivers and is hoping to increase the number of the handy van drivers that they have by early next year, which would allow us to provide more services. I don't know whether early next year means calendar year or fiscal year. Um, I'm assuming it means fiscal year beginning in July, but I'm gonna follow up on that to find out because I, I didn't know myself. Uh, and then with respect to uh our favorite topic, Five Twenty Five Avocado Street. Just a quick update on that, that the Department of Planning and Permitting issued a violation notice on the thirteenth of May of uh twenty, thirteenth of May, twenty twenty-four. The civil fines totaling forty-one thousand dollars, um forty-one thousand four hundred dollars. The Department of Planning Permitting is currently coordinating with City Corporate Council. And my understanding is we're gonna be pursuing demolition on that site because I think everybody's just had about enough of those folks. Um, so I'll provide further updates on, on when that becomes available. Um, there was also a question about, I think Chair Chicago, you had sent me a, a video regarding to the trees at Five Twenty Five Avocado. And according to the map of the site, the site's fifty by approximately one eighty-five uh feet in diameter. We couldn't determine whether those trees were on the Avocado Street property or they, whether they were on the DLNR property. So I think we're gonna have to do some additional investigation around that, as you just mentioned, or around the trees. So it's, there's a lot of them, but it's, it's hard to tell actually who's is who. Um, and then uh an item that's not on our report that we sent back to you is just a quick update on the Wahe'aua Playground. I spoke to Director Laura Thielen this afternoon to try to get an update on that. And the good news is, um, the folks that provide this, the, the play surface uh for that playground, they've got another, um, they've got another playground uh that they're gonna disassemble and donate to the city. Uh, so it'll be a resolution for that, so we can get that replaced as quickly as possible. And we just learned that today. Uh, so that's the, the quick news on that. That was a, just a ridiculous and tragic event. And the mayor was not very pleased, as you can imagine. That's all I have for today and I'm happy to respond to any questions from the board or the community.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a great report and, and uh everyone is gonna be so super excited to see a replacement play apparatus. So please thank the mayor and, and thank the director and yourself for, for following up on that. We appreciate that very, very much. And the community, the kids are gonna be so happy. So thank you.
Certainly will.
And good news on the Alea Bridge too, because that has come up. So just FYI, again, just coincidental um that today, two different people brought this up at our neighborhood board meeting regarding Alea Bridge or formerly Alea Bridge or the location of one, two, three Mango Street. So the, the questions that came up today for, as a follow-up, one is that apparently there is a pastor who is using that facility. And the question is, how did he get to use that facility if it's, if it wasn't supposed to be opened yet or used or available for, for use? So um I was gonna ask you if you had any idea or any information on that. And again, coincidentally, I just got that call because um he asked for a call back for tomorrow. So I will be giving him a call, but just a FY to you, so that, that location is being used. I'm not sure by, for what organization or what it's being done, but they are using it. Um supposedly, they are using, they're, they have access to the water and electricity. So I guess people um are showering in there now. So we were told when the, when that location closed, that it was not, you know, it couldn't be used. So would you be able to find out what the current status is that, that how did they get access to use that facility? Are they paying for it or are they, who's, who's in charge basically? Because our, the last thing we knew is that Alea Bridge who had it previously, I guess they just walked away and there were, there's, there were bills that were old still yet on it. So if you can help us, you know, find out more information on that.
Yeah, we've already started investigating that chair because we didn't know either. It was a surprise to us and we were incredibly disappointed because we had just cleaned that site up.
Because it was clean, yeah.
Yeah, and just to see it occupied again was very extremely disappointing. Uh, Mayor's Chief of Staff, Andy Sugg, uh visited the site la- last week. Um, and he's following up to try to understand how they got access. Obviously, that's a state site. We hate to, you know, kick, kick the can down the road. But we have no idea how those folks um got onto site or gave them access to the building. But we, we're continuing to follow that up, but we're, we're aware of it and we're not pleased with it, about it.
Okay, I, after, tomorrow I'll give you a phone call after um I get some information, some clarification. Yeah, and then the other thing is, uh, and I did relay this to HPD Officer earlier today, so just FYI for you. I did, I was asked to do a follow-up on the request for cleaning up the illegal dumping that is taking place on Koah Street, near the corner or the intersection of Kilani Avenue and Koah Street. Uh, it's that area that uh people are dumping ma- mattresses, couches, et cetera. So the person who initially called, told me about it, called to say it's all still there and it's actually getting worse. So uh HPD Officer said he would follow up, but actually he would have to call somebody else because they handle scheduling and all that. So I'm not sure if you're able to find out what the status is from, uh, from DFM side or who does the scheduling.
Yeah, i- is it Cityland? Yeah, is it Cityland or State Land Chair? Do you, are you?
That would be, I I'm going to say that's Cityland because that area, Kilani Avenue is city. Koa Street is city, so.
Okay, I'll reach out to E N V and D F M because they organize, you know, D F M will organize the cleanup. E N V brings the trucks. So we'll we'll see what we can do on that for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the the last one is if I can have a discussion with you or if you can put me in the right direction. I would like to bring up the issue of repaving our our walkways, you know, in in Wahewa on the side of the on the Kilani Avenue side. Because people have come up to me and said, you know, it's they did, which is right in front of Haleko, our 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 park here. They did, the people who are working on renovations here, they, you know, they paved the cobalt, you know, area on the walkway. But the regular walkway, if you walk further up, going up to Wahewa Elementary or the high school, it's all crumbly. So I would like to maybe meet with you or if I could be put in contact with someone to talk about that as a project for our 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 town here.
Yeah, you could, you know, it would be really helpful, Chair. So just send me, if you got just a brief map.
I always send you photos.
Yeah, just do a brief map and just highlight it and shoot it to me and then I'll forward it to D F M and D T S.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your support.
Of course, always.
Okay, question I'm good for here. Questions from the from the? Aaron, yeah, go ahead.
Quick question. Hi, Kevin. Thanks for being here. The proposed sewer bills, is that still proposed or is that hike rate going to take place?
Yeah, they're still they're still working through it with City Council. So it's not hasn't been hasn't been finalized yet.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public? Questions virtually and TJ, yeah, and then, oh, who's that? Oh, Alicia. Okay, both of you, can we keep it quick?
Actually, thank you, Chair Ishikawa. Kevin, thanks for being here tonight. Just wanted to know if there's any plans to replace the no parking sign at the intersection of California Avenue and Uluehi. Some of us may know that 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 wall right there was demolished by a car three weeks ago, maybe. So number one, and then so any suspects on that playground apparatus fire? And then also, so am I to assume that there is no reso being put forth by Councilmember Matt Wires Office if that one, two, three Mango Street property? Yeah, is there a reso? Are you aware of a reso asking for the city to condemn that? And I'm not sure I get the city and the state, and I'm not sure why it's a state property. And then Koa Street and Kilani Avenue. Now, would that be Chair, you were talking about the trash at Koa and Kilani. Now, is it at that intersection or is that the next intersection in off of Koa where the Hawaiian Tel and Spectrum Substation is?
No, so I gave the information to, but it's the right after Bethel Church. So if you're going up Koa Street right after Bethel Church, there it's right in that area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so Kevin.
You can't miss it. There are tons of of mattresses and a couch and a little refrigerator and other stuff.
Right, so Kevin, if you could reach out to me, because a few years back, we actually coordinated a community cleanup because no one could decide who exactly was whose kuleana that that was. So I can help you all with that. Again, eight oh eight, two, three, eight, nine, four, two, seven. Again, thank you for being here and thank you for working hard along with the mayor to take care of our community. We appreciate it.
It's our pleasure, TJ. Just a response to a couple of your questions. I wasn't aware of the sign. But if we can put both the the cleanup and the sign request through the riser process, that'll be really helpful. And I think we've got a representative there from the Neighborhood Board Office. So we can be starting to get those shared out to the right departments. That'll be really helpful. But I'm going to follow up with the E N V and D F M once I get the map from Chair Ishikawa to see if we can get the cleanup. Kelly Anaya is on from Vice Chair Wires Office. So I didn't want to answer on her behalf, but I'm sure she can give you update on the with respect to the resolution. And was there one other thing that you mentioned that you had three things, I think?
Suspects regarding the playground.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, unfortunately, no. There's a lot of folks that would like to get their hands on them. I can probably shouldn't say that out loud in a public meeting.
Just got recorded.
Yeah, maybe you could delete that piece. But that's that's all the updates we have.
Okay, and and just real quick, the, let's see, so Alea Bridge was the first entity. And then it kind of morphed into the Chief Zero. So thank you so much for allowing that clarification. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And moving on to Councilmember's office, Kelly. I'm sorry, Kelly, I missed Alicia. I apologize.
Yeah, no problem.
Hello. Hi, Kevin. I'm going to piggyback on what Jeannie mentioned about improving sidewalks. I had several residents' concerns that from Walker onto Avocado is is hard to for the seniors to walk on the unimproved sidewalk and it's all torn up. So if you could look in on that and also the intersection on Walker and Avocado is very dangerous, especially on Sundays when the Mormon ward has their churchgoers park on the side. People have to walk around onto the road and vehicles have to go around the parked vehicles. And and there's also speeders coming in from Kamihameha Highway onto Avocado. And it's a very dangerous situation, like to request a study and maybe rumble strips.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, were you able to ca- capture that?
Yeah, we'll we'll put that on the riser and have D T S follow up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, everyone. Going to go back to Councilmember Wires Office, Kelly. Sorry about that.
Hey, Chair, can you guys hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, great. Yeah, no problem. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires Office. I'll go ahead and start with, I guess, all the topics that have already come up. So regarding Mango Street, our Councilmember's office is in touch with all of the parties involved. D P P did do a reinspection contrary to what was reported earlier. And D P P continues the conversations with all parties involved. And it is that was correctly stated that they're not supposed to be having any kind of activity on the property. So yeah, that's what I have with D P P. Councilmember did draft a reso, but he decided to hold, I'm sorry, he dropped the reso to condemn the property. But he is waiting because he is hopeful that all the stakeholders will be able to resolve the matter on their own. Again, our office is in touch with all parties involved, so we are working closely. You know, and monitoring the situation. Likewise, for the Avocado Street, thank you, Director, for providing that report. Let's see. What else? Also for providing the update on the play apparatus that was burned. So yes, council is just waiting for the gift reso to come through, and I believe we're supposed to be getting it anytime now. Um, let's see, what else? The Kilani Ave walkways, I did submit a request back in April of twenty twenty-four. D F M is aware of it, but no timeline was provided. But this is only for the portion that was in front of the district park. So I believe you wanted it going further up, Glenn. That was not part of my request. This was only for the area in front of the district park. Also, I believe someone else, I believe Warren, brought up about the speeding and then the accident up by Iliahi Elementary. I spoke with him this morning. At the time, I did not have my notes. But I was able to find it and yes, D T S is planning to install six speed humps in the vicinity of Iliahi Elementary and, excuse me, Trinity. They're going to be asking D O T for the assistance with the installation, but no timeline was provided for that as well. I might as well just do these. The last meeting, Board Member Harvest asked for, not asked, but mentioned the delineators on California Ave by the bank was down. I did submit the request, but I saw that it still has not been fixed. Likewise, Board Member Sylvia had asked about the Royal Palm treatment, I'm sorry, the the trees on Royal Palm Drive. So Duff was supposed to have did a treatment, May twelfth through the sixteenth, pending the weather. I haven't got confirmation if they were able to do it or not, but that was supposed to be the last or the most recent treatment. And then also, Board Member Francher asked for a revisit of the Rose Street Traffic Study. According to D T S's notes and according to mine, they just did one in August of twenty twenty-three, so that it's still a little too close and they're not really willing to do another study at this time. Uh, let's see, what else? I am aware of all the crosswalks along up and down California Ave that need to be repainted, so I did submit a request for that. Some of them like Dole, Uluehi, Uku and Makavau. I submitted the request. D F M is aware of it, but no timeline was provided. Let's see. All right, I think that's it. And so for my actual report, Councilmember wanted to give a shout out to the Po'okala Fellowship Intern Program, Waheva's own Autumn Garluso. Did her or she completed her fellowship rather with the Honolulu Police Department. Likewise, for the city budget, Council current is currently reviewing the admin's proposed twenty twenty-six fiscal budget package. And June fourth, Council will be holding its third reading of the budget bills. So please be sure to submit your questions, testimony, whatnot, if you have any concerns. Let's see, Councilmember also wants to thank the Wahewa Rainbow Seniors for always inviting him to their to their program. He attended the last week of April. And again, some of the concerns that had come up was the crosswalks along California Ave and the pool heater at Wahewa District Park. So my latest that I heard that the heater has been ordered, but we're still pending the notice of to proceed order. For Whitmore, Halemono Elementary will be getting a marked crosswalk that is at the Lalavie Street and Ihi Ihi Ave. No timeline was provided though. Thank you again to Director for providing information and update on the arson on the play apparatus. D P R is also doing a, I would rather seeking public input as they try to expand the dog friendly parks across Oahu. So I believe letters were sent out to all the neighborhood boards for public outreach. And then lastly, Legislative Updates, Bill eighteen, which would allow the city to lead by example to reduce plastic waste by restricting the sale of single-use plastic bottles in city vending or vending machines on city facilities. That bill passed their third reading and was signed into law by Mayor Blangiardi on May second. Bill fifteen, which would help to provide financial relief for local families to comply with the cesspool conversion regulations. This bill passed third reading on May fourteenth and is, I believe, currently still with the mayor for signature. And let's see, Bill twenty-nine regarding the real property tax exemption period, which would extend the rental period from ten years to fifteen years. This also passed third reading on May fourteenth and is currently with the mayor for approval. That's all the updates I have for today. If anyone has any questions, I can take them back.
Wow, that was a lot. Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly. You always do good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Two things to add to your list. The fans in here, half of the fans don't work and the half it does work. Switch is touchy. So and it frankly was never installed correctly because it only has one speed, but it shows it should have four. And the other thing is the clocks parking garage on California are off again. They're not.
Oh, at the transit center? Oh, yeah, you know what? I, yeah, I submitted that probably about a month ago. And I drive past it quite often and I see that it's still not fixed. So I'll see if I can get an update. Yeah.
Thank you. The last time I told you, oh, the parts are real old, but they can't be that old because parking garage isn't that old. So, you know.
Well, that's what I was told the first time. And then the last time it happened, I was told, no, that that was incorrect information. But that I guess when it rains really hard or something and you guys have like a power outage or just even a surge, it just needs to be reset. So I don't know what the situation is this time because I'm thinking they should have just reset it. But I was out there last week and the week before and yeah, I see that it's still not operational. So I'll follow up with that and see what the status is. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the community? Any questions from the public? And we're really short on time, so please keep it very, very short if you can help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Ishikawa. I just have one question, and thank you, Kelly. Always fabulous information. Love all that you do for our community. I just wanted to know, you know, the intersection of Kane Street and California Avenue, kind of fronting the value added center. Do you know if that's a city's kuleana to take care of the trees and like the little the square box? I don't know what it's called, but where the tree comes out of, where the tree is planted.
So like the planter, like a planter or something?
Yeah.
That I'm not sure, but I can go look into it. Does it need, does the trees need to be pruned?
Yeah, well, actually, about two weekends ago, not this past weekend, I think it was the weekend before. My auntie and I were driving by there and we saw a young man. Let's see, and I'm sorry, please forgive me. I think he was maybe autistic about maybe in his twenties or thirties. But he had, we saw him fall to the ground. So of course, we pulled over right there at the tree. And there was a branch that had fallen from the tree and he had tripped over it. And so, you know, Auntie and I got out and, you know, he just, he was okay. We asked him if he needed help or whatever. And then he said, no, he did have a little, a little scratch on his, a little booboo on his knee and then one on his opposite palm of his hand. But he was okay. We gave him some, you know, I always keep a first aid kit in my car. So and then he was certain that he was able to walk home. So he didn't want to ride. We kind of just followed him, but I took the tree branch and tossed it out of the walkway. So I was just wondering if you know, you know, if somebody can, you know, who's supposed to check for dead branches, I guess. Because it was about an inch and a half, maybe two inches in diameter, and it was right across the sidewalk area. So anything that you can share would be great.
Okay, and this is on the value added side of the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
I'll look into that. Thank you for letting me know.
If you go over there and you look through the fence of the value added center, I think the branch is still there. And I didn't, I forgot to bring it up to Chris earlier, but yeah, I think the branch is still there. So.
Okay, no problem. I'll I'll go ahead and look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions for Councilmembers Office? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. We're going to move on to Governor's Office. Rosemarie? Oh, she's not here. Okay, moving on to Senator Delacruz's office.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Charles here from Senator Delacruz's office. I know we're short on time, so I'll quickly try to go through it. Just as Kelly just said from Matt Wires Office. The Department of Agriculture and Honolulu City and County or Urban Forestry Division were set to do pesticide and palm treatment on Royal Palm Drive last week between May twelfth and May sixteenth, depending on weather. P D L N R Environmental Assessment. We defined there was no significant impact to the Wahewa Freshwater State Recreation area impact or improvement project. And then Senator Delacruz is the Wasing Media, so H B three hundred passed relating to the state budget, which added twenty-one positions and four point nine million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-six and two million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven to strengthen Hawaii's ecosystems and agricultural lands. It added forty-four new positions at twenty-five million dollars in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven for biosecurity. Eight new positions were added for addressing illegal fireworks for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, which creates the Explosive Enforcement Section. which creates the Explosive Enforcement Section to help stop the importation of illegal fireworks. Uh, one what, $1.2 million in fiscal year 2026 and $1.6 million in fiscal year 2027 for the extension of the Illegal Fireworks Task Force. And then, I know addressed earlier was the security around the Wahewa Pedestrian Bridge. Um, so the Department of Law Enforcement Substation at Central Oahu Agriculture and Food Hub, there's $3 million for plan and design and 2.4 for security services and surveillance. And then, uh, six new positions, um, for 2026 and 2027 for the DLE security at the new Wahewa Civic Center and the Central Oahu Food Hub. And then relating to the landfill, HB 969 passed final rating and it's been transmitted to the governor. Um, this prohibits landfills on Class A agricultural land and, uh, inlands of underground injection line, which, uh, protects our aquifers. And then two quick notable bills that also passed, uh, SB 934 requires the city and county of Honolulu to complete the development of the Pearl Highlands Park ride and share, improving the skyline access for Central Oahu commuters. And then SB 1300 expands the free school lunch, uh, meal for students by expanding the coverage for the next school year and by 2026, 2027 school year, will include coverage for students whose families, uh, income is not more than 300% above the federal poverty line. And that's all I have. Uh, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Charles. Um, Board, any questions for Senator's office? Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm sorry, you went through that really quick. Did you say something about money for security for the bridge, Halemono Bridge?
Yeah, so, uh, for the Wahewa Pedestrian Bridge, um, on the other side of it is where they're building the region, from my understanding, they're building the regional kitchen in the Central Oahu Food Hub. And so there will be, uh, a new DLE substation there, uh, for security and surveillance of that area.
That, so, one side.
Sorry, what'd you say?
It, so that substation is gonna be manned on one side?
Um, uh, from my understanding, it's gonna be on, uh, both sides. It's gonna, uh, be the surveillance and production of that area. Sorry.
Okay.
But I can, I can follow up.
Did you want to, you had that? Okay, um, uh, TJ?
Yeah, just real quick. Thank you for your report. Um, did you say that there would be a DLE substation for the security?
DLE, Department of Law Enforcement.
Oh, excuse me. And then I wanted to know, um, and thank you very much for clarifying that. What are the plans for, um, the traffic that will be generated from the, this, uh, centralized kitchen and food hub? I'm sorry, I didn't, you spoke so fast, I didn't catch the whole name. Um, because as we all know, it's just, you know, two lanes there in Wai Avenue. So what are the plans or has there been a traffic study or what's gonna happen with that?
Um, I do not know the answer to that, but I can ask if there's been a traffic study. I know they're going to have to expand the, because there's gonna be trucks coming in. So I know they're gonna have to at least expand the road so the trucks can make the turn.
Okay, yeah, if you could, um, bring that information to, uh, one of our board meetings as soon as you're able to. Um, we, I've had lots and lots of conversation with Whitmore residents, uh, as lately as, you know, as recent as today about the traffic and whether or not, um, Senator Delacruz or any of his staff uh, has actually sat in that traffic between two and four in the afternoon. So anything you can share would be great. Mahalo.
Yep, I can bring that back.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Charles. Um, the questions for Senator's office. And thank you, Charles, even though you read it quickly. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
No, sorry. I know you're short on time. That's why I was trying to go fast.
We just pushed on time. That's, I do apologize, but please thank the Senator, um, for all he's doing too. Thank you very much. Hey, um, calling on Representative Peruso.
Aloha, Board, Chair, um, and members and community members. My name is Yvonne Yoro, um, Office Manager for Representative Peruso. I'll keep it really brief because Charles already mentioned that session is over. Um, there were a lot of bills that were passed that we're really pleased with. Um, so it was a relatively productive session, but Representative will be giving more updates in our main newsletter, which I will send to Rachel, um, for the community to see and review. But I do wanna do a quick update or share, um, Rep's quick updates about the military leases. Um, and I'm sorry that the Lieutenant, um, Lieutenant Cox couldn't stay, but for the military lease, um, updates, on Friday, May 9th, the Board of Land and Natural Resources voted five to two to reject the Army's final EIS that sought to lock nearly 20,000 acres um, of state-seeded land for another 65 years. So this is land, um, on Hawaii Island, um, Pohakula. Um, so they rejected that final EIS. Um, so what happens now is that this largely depends on what the Army decides. Um, if they still want to retain the seeded lands, it has two options to appeal the BLNR ruling, um, or submit a revised EIS that fixes the deficiencies that the board flagged, as well as other members who testified. And I was there, uh, I, uh, was sitting amongst the community members. There were hundreds of folks who joined in person at the BLNR, um, facility in town, and then there were hundreds and hundreds of more, um, who joined online. Um, so you can either do that, um, or, yeah, sub, uh, submit a revised EIS that fixes the deficiencies. Um, but even with a clean EIS, um, that won't be enough. Um, so the Army, so to move forward, the Army would also have to petition that the BLNR needs to amend its Conservation District rules or ask the State Land Use Commission to pull parcels out of the Conservation District entirely, um, obtain a professional valuation of the lands and settle a legal mechanism for retention or, or negotiate fresh terms with the BLNR, including rents, cleanup assurances, cultural guarantees, and explicit timelines for remediation and return. Um, so every one of these options opens up another opportunity for the public to engage, and we want to share with our community here how important it is to remain engaged, um, in this, you know, these discussions. Um, as the Lieutenant mentioned earlier, there's another EIS that was submitted specifically on federal land that's, um, managed on Oahu, so include, uh, Kohuku, Pomo Ho, which is right in our backyard, and then Makua. So these conversations will affect our community sooner rather than later. And yeah, we just ask that you folks continue to stay engaged, um, and reach out to our office if you have any questions.
Thank you, Yvonne. Any questions from the Board? Hey, can, I don't see any questions virtually.
A question?
I'm sorry, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Just statement. Welcome next term.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions because I don't know how to separate this from your folks'.
That is, I was gonna ask you that. I seriously was gonna ask you about that later. Okay, any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Erin.
I haven't heard the news report that, um, June, I think TJ said, is that, um, maybe I just need to do more research about that they've ceased the EIS and the proposal to pursue Pomo Ho and Kohuku. Is that connected?
So I, actually, I'll defer to TJ because TJ, um, was the one who shared with our office that news or June saw that news. I, I didn't read article myself yet. Oh, yes.
Do you need the microphone?
Basically, whatever means that whatever, if they gotta resubmit their EIS, looks like they're gonna still eliminate Makua and Halemono sites, but I'm pretty sure they wanna keep Kahuku on Oahu anyway.
Yes, and that is, that is correct, June. So, uh, it's actually not Halemono, but it's, uh, Pomo Ho and the front side of Makua with the back side of Makua, which is closest to the mountain. Um, they're, they want to hang on to, I think they're 6,000 acres. You folks can look at it on, uh, HawaiiNewsNow.com. It was top of the hour for the six o'clock news, but they did only talk about Makua and Pomo Ho. They did not say anything about the Kohuku training area. Uh, I plan to watch the news again at 10 o'clock to see if there is an update, but they again have decided to sunset the leases. In other words, not renew them come 2029. Um, and I just got confirmation, like literally this second, that the military is giving Pomo Ho back. I literally just got confirmation right now. So thank you very much. It, um, just sharing.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for that update, for the latest update. Um, any other questions for, for Yvonne? Any other, any other questions for Yvonne? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Yvonne.
Mahalo, everyone.
Okay, can we make it for vote card? Yep, okay. Okay, everyone, we, we have enough time to do our Board Business Item A approval of- Excuse me? Excuse me? We have enough time to do our Board Minutes and then we'll adjourn. Um, this is Item Eight, uh, Board Business Approval of Minutes. Do I have approval to accept the regular meeting minutes of Monday, March 17th, 2025?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Michelle did the, the motion to accept the minutes as written, right? Correct. And then who was the second? Oh, Sylvia, Sylvia? Okay, so, okay, Sylvia. Okay. Okay, which was that? Um, okay, any discussion on the minutes? If I, any, any discussion? Okay, uh, since we're hearing none, we will pass them as written. Thank you.
Okay, we, uh, we, minutes are accepted and we are gonna adjourn this meeting a little early because of the time, uh, at this, at 9:41. The Wahewa Whitmore Village Neighborhood Board Meeting is adjourned. Um, hope we see you next month, um, June 16th at 7 o'clock here at the Wahewa District Park Meeting Room. Aloha.